Go to item number. Thank you. All right, good. Is this my good side? All right, so I, so item number four, a tree protection zone for one seventy-three Hawthorne Drive in Atherton. And we'll go ahead and start with the staff report.
Thank you. For those who are logged in remotely over Zoom, you should be able to see a site plan up on the screen. So, good evening, commissioners. Tonight you are being asked to consider a tree protection zone or TPZ exception for four trees at one seventy-three Hawthorne. The four trees consist of one deodor cedar tree and three redwood trees. With one cedar and one of the redwoods situated within the subject property of the rear yard neighbor at ninety-nine Linden. And the remaining two redwood trees situated on the property at one seventy-three Hawthorne, located in the rear left side yard. All four trees are requesting a tree protection zone exception down to six times each of the tree's diameter, which is reduced from the otherwise ten times standard TPC required distance. So the property is rectangular in shape. It contains a main residence, a detached garage, and an existing swimming pool. So the applicants are proposing to construct a new detached accessory dwelling unit in the rear left side of the yard. The proposed location of this ADU is noted to be due to existing physical improvements on the site. A large onsite subterranean detention retention drainage system underneath the property in the opposite right side yard, as well as other existing onsite and heritage trees in proximity that are proposed to remain. The additionally onsite exploratory trenching by the project arborist was done early on for all of these four trees that are proposed to have an exception. The exploratory trenching did note that the proposed location of this ADU was found to be supported and not impact or significantly impact any of the discovered root systems of any of those four trees. So the town arborist has reviewed all of the applicant's submittal materials, the, including the project arborist report, and does concur with all the findings that the project arborist report evaluates for each of the four trees, concurs with the exploratory trenching summaries prepared, as well as the proposed mitigation measures to protect those four trees during any possible future construction. The town arborist does further note that the applicant did work extensively with town staff prior to submittal of this formal application. Additionally, that the proposed pier and grade construction type of building for the detached ADU would be the least intrusive construction methodology for the root systems of all four trees. And that both deodor cedars and the redwood trees are noted to have high tolerances to construction impacts. So as such, it is found that the request does meet two of the six criteria in the town's heritage tree preservation guidelines in order to support the requested exception of six times the tree's diameter for each of the four trees. Staff does recommend that the commission approve the application as detailed in the staff report and as per the recommended conditions of approval that were included within attachment one of the staff report, which is the draft TPC exception certificate. So I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have. The town arborist Sally Ben Stilton is also on the call and available for any questions as well. Thank you.
Yeah, Sally, do you have anything to add to that?
I did want to note that the applicant reached out to the neighbor with the trees that would be impacted and they were okay with the project. I just also wanted to really highlight that this was the only location they could put the ADU and you, you can see that their regular design of the ADU and that's because they tried their best to fit it in and meet the six times. So they made the shape of the ADU irregular. I worked with the applicant over three, three months or more on trying to have the least impact on the trees. And they're doing a shallow grade beam. So that will be better. And then they can place the piers around where the roots were found. So for all those reasons and more, I, I felt okay with recommending the six times for all four of the trees.
All right, thanks, Sally. Any questions of staff?
No questions. Thank you.
All right, good. Then I'll, I'll go ahead and open it up to the applicant. By the way, we actually have, if you count ex-planning commissioners, we have more of a quorum in the room than online. Zachalos here and Mr. Danelli is here. So they're back up in case anybody, and everybody, in case everybody has any issues. So let's go ahead. Do you want to, do you want to add anything?
Hello, everybody. First off, thank you for the process and the commission for reviewing our request for the exception. We did try.
And go ahead and introduce yourself for the record.
I'm sorry, I'm Ralph Sokla, owner of the home of one seventy-three Hawthorne. I apologize for that.
Yeah, that's all right.
Again, it's been a lengthy process. Appreciate Sally and the rest of the team we have assembled. We've gone through everything we can to ensure that the safety of the trees was, was foremost in everything we did. We've talked to the neighbor twice, one for the surveyor and arborist to go inspect the tree on the other side of the fence and also that we've done the trenching and the trenching showed exactly what was just disclosed, which was it wasn't, it did not look to be creating any harm for the, for the trees. We did not want to remove any of the trees because it's important to the living situation that we're in right now. If there are things that we could do to improve the safety, we will do that.
All right, very good. And you did a lot of pre-work too. That's, I know something on the, on the, the photos that were included in it. So thank you for doing the checks on it and the, and the trenching and things like that.
Yeah.
So I tried to train on.
All right, good. Well, he's, it looks like he's trainable.
So we just want to thank everybody. We know this is a process.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Is anyone else here to speak on this item? I guess I thought Mr. Danelli was coming to oppose, but I guess he's not. All right, then I'll, I'll see no one and no one online is raise their hand or anything, Ralph, right? I'm not seeing anything. Can you pull that down? Yeah, so I can see. Yeah, I don't see anybody. All right, I'll go ahead and close the public, public hearing, bring it back for the, to the commission for discussion, action as appropriate. Pretty straightforward for me. I, I, I don't see anything and with Sally's review and everyone else's on it and with an ex-planning commissioner who knows the, knows how to do it properly, I think that everything looks straightforward to me.
Yeah, I have no questions. I'm ready to make a motion if.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, I move that the planning commission find the exception to the tree protection zones for four heritage trees. Number one, tree number one oh eight, a twenty-two point six inch Deodora cedar tree. Number two, tree number one ten, a thirty-nine and a half inch coast redwood tree. Number three, tree number one thirteen, a forty-four inch coast redwood tree. And four, tree number one fifteen, a sixty inch coast redwood tree to six times the tree's diameter for all four trees to allow for the construction of a new detached accessory dwelling unit at one seventy-three Hawthorne Drive would not be contrary to the purpose and intent of the general plan for the reasons outlined in the staff report and that the commission approve the TPZ exception subject to the conditions as listed in the draft TPZ exception certificate.
Nancy, you want to second that one? You want me to?
Yes, I'll second that.
All right, then with that, we'll go ahead and have a roll call.
Chair Lane?
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner?
You're up, Nancy. Nancy, you're on, you're on mute.
Commissioner Lerner, we see you on mute. If you could please unmute yourself.
There we go. I was struggling with my mute button. Yes, I'll second that.
Commissioner Narancic?
You're going to say yes to the motion. Is that right, Nancy?
Yes.
All right.
Commissioner Narancic?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, by landsides like to read it passes. All right. All right, thank you very much. Thanks again for coming. It's great to see you. All right, with that, then we'll go to, to item number four B was the heritage, heritage removal request at seven six eight Catalpa Drive and we'll do it through the same process. We'll go with the, with an overview from staff, then we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and for questions of staff, then we'll open up the public hearing for the applicants. Go ahead and bring it back.
Oh, sorry, not, not to interrupt. I'm on the call as well.
All right, good.
This is Gabby Akonse.
All right.
Apologize, I was a few minutes late.
All right, all right. Did, did you want, so when did you, did you come in before the, so we have to, we have to go, right?
Well, I heard over, I heard last ten minutes, so.
All right, well, let's, let's, let's go ahead and let you.
Okay.
Vote on the next one. So now that you're officially here, okay?
Thank you.
All right, great. Then we'll go ahead then with the item, item four P. Ralph, are you the person on this one?
Yes, I'll be chairlain. Thank you. Okay, so our next item is that two six, two six eight Catalpa Drive. It is a point nine three acre or as called an Atherton acre lot located in the Orwinay Zone District bounded by other low-density single-family homes. The applicant is requesting a heritage tree removal for one heritage tree, a nineteen point three inch coast live oak, which will refer to as tree number thirty-one from here on. This removal is to address potential future conflicts between the tree and the main residence, as well as to accommodate in addition to the existing five thousand square foot main residence. The site also contains existing pool and poolhouse. The applicant is proposing in addition a conversion of the poolhouse to an ADU, which does not require any action by the planning commission this evening. Now, the applicant previously applied for tree protection zone exception and that request was heard by the planning commission in May for this same tree. That TPZ exception was down to two point five times the tree's diameter. So due to that low exception requested, the planning commission denied the request at that time. However, there were comments provided by the chair to the effect that the commission could consider a tree removal in place of a TPZ exception, considering the close proximity of the tree to the house. The tree is currently eight feet from the main residence with an additional would be just four feet. So in that time, the applicant has submitted a new request for a heritage tree removal permit.
Nancy, I think you got two. There you go. Okay.
So the applicant has since submitted a new request for the tree removal permit in place of the TPZ request. This was reviewed by completeness, excuse me, for completeness by planning staff and the town arborist and evaluated for conformance with requirements of chapter eight point one zero, which we will get into in more detail. So you can see the location of the tree relative to the residence in the first figure here, which is also included in the staff report. Detail on this tree was provided by a report by Keelty Arbor Services from June of twenty twenty-two. So as mentioned, it is a nineteen point three inch coast live oak, found to be in good condition, good vigor, fair form, but with close proximity to the home. The arborist report, as well as the applicant's narrative, notes the potential future risk of this proximity and the lean towards the home. So in the case of any sort of failure of the tree or any of the limbs, there could be significant damage or potential risk to the people in the home. The applicant's narrative also notes that as a tree grows, there could be impacts between the roots and the foundation, leading to damage in the future. Now, the six criteria for the planning commission to consider for the removal of this tree are provided in chapter eight point one zero. The applicant's letter specifically speaks to four of these conditions. So the first, which is eight point one zero point zero four zero D two, the probability of a safety hazard, personal injury, or property damage. So as noted, because of the proximity of the tree to the home, the applicant believes and the arborist report asserts as well that there could be damage in the future, as well as a risk to the safety of the residents. Second, eight one zero zero four zero D three, due to the number, species, size, and location of existing trees in the area, the effect of this removal on shade, noise buffers, et cetera, as well as the general welfare of the area would be minimal. So as we see here is a plan showing the location of all the trees on site. The applicant notes that overall there will be, even after removal, there will be thirty-six remaining trees on the property. The applicant is also proposing a replacement plan for three new oak trees to replace this tree. So due to the amount of trees on the property, does the applicant's belief that again, there will be no impacts on the general welfare of the area. And here is this replanting plan, which we'll get into more detail as well. Thirdly is eight one zero zero four zero D four. Good forestry practices, such as, but not limited to, the age, number of healthy trees given a parcel of land of support and where the long-term benefits of proposed reforestation plan. So while the applicant did not speak to this specific condition, this may be considered considering the location of the replacement trees relative to the existing location of tree number thirty-one. So here we see the proposed locations for the new three oak species to replace tree number thirty-one. This replacement plan is in conformance with the requirements of the municipal code. And so should the heritage tree removal be approved, the town arborist found the replacement plan to be adequate. So considering this eight point zero condition or criteria, excuse me, the commission may find that the long-term benefits of the new tree locations would usurp again any negative impacts removing tree number thirty-one. And finally is eight one zero zero four zero D six, which would be the necessity to remove the tree to allow usable use or enjoyment of the property. The applicant believes this removal is necessary for this reasonable use of the property. So there's proposed addition, which we see here shaded in blue, which would be to two existing bedrooms. And the addition would be to accommodate the family's current needs. The applicant does not believe there's another practical configuration for this addition. Staff will speak to that in a little more detail as well. Now, the applicant also submitted a letter requesting that the fees for the application be waived. I think they have since submitted to city clerk for that. So that is not being heard by the planning commission this evening, but would be an item for the city council. The town arborist reviewed the applicant's letter request, project arborist report, and the proposed planting plan. Now, tree thirty-one was found to be in good health by the town arborist and as also noted in the, excuse me, project arborist report. There's no damage currently to the foundation of the residence that's been documented. And it's been, was observed that tree has been recently pruned of the town arborist, further noting that the tree could be pruned further to lighten the canopy over the house and reduce the risk of future impacts. So considering the existing condition of the tree, the goal of preserving oak trees within the heritage tree guidelines in chapter eight point one zero, and the current lack of risk to the residents or any documented negative impacts from the tree to date, the town arborists could not recommend the removal of this tree. Thus, the staff recommendation is that the application be denied. Of course, the commission could make an alternative motion. So we've included within the staff report two formal motions, the first reflecting the staff recommendation to deny the request and find it to be contrary to the general plan. The second being an alternative motion to accept the request. Public notice was sent to all properties within five hundred feet. Prior to the publishing of the staff report, we did receive a public comment from a neighbor who just notes her name is Leslie, with the chair's permission, I'd like to read that into the record. She starts, "To my concern, I am a hundred percent against removing a heritage tree to accommodate in addition to the main house of two six eight Catalpa Drive. The value of living in Atherton is the heritage trees. I moved to this community more than thirty years ago because of the country-like setting of a community surrounded by large urban and suburban region. This town is unique. Upon moving here, I learned that these trees were protected by incoherence. To me, why have such an ordinance if all it takes is an application to remove a heritage tree? Our community does not lead larger houses and fewer native trees that were here before most of us lived in this town. Now, more than ever, we need to preserve our precious heritage trees. Trees that take years to reach maturity and can leave live two hundred, two to three hundred years, serving all of us to make our environment healthier for all who live here. With climate change here now, we need trees more than larger houses. Trees that give off oxygen and take away carbon dioxide, provide shade on the days that keep getting warmer and warmer. Once exceptions to this ordinance grow in numbers, it will become the norm to approve these applications. Not one of these kinds of applications should be approved. The removal of healthy heritage trees should not happen ever. This tree on the property of two six eight was there when the new owners bought the property. The ordinance was in place when the new owners bought the property. Leave the tree alone. Let the property owners come up with another plan. The heritage trees are more important as community than any other homeowner's wishes to add in addition to the main house. My two cents, I would like to preserve the heritage trees in this community. Signed, Leslie, a concerned neighbor. No other public comments received prior to the publishing of the staff report or received in the time since the staff report was published. We have the two members of the applicant team here in person. So I'll allow them the opportunity here and yield back to you, Charlie.
All right, very good. Any, any questions of staff on that one? Sally, do you have anything you want to add to this?
Um, not really. I just want to say, I guess, typically if I'm going to approve something like that, I would have to see foundation damage or lifting or something like that. I mean, I do understand that the tree will get larger, but I can't approve something based on something in the future possibly happening.
Right.
So.
Thank you.
Eric?
Yeah, yes, go ahead.
I have a question for Sally.
Go ahead.
A question for Sally. Sally, the arborist retained by the applicant concludes that there's either a high risk or a moderate risk of failure. If you conclude in your report that there is no high risk of failure, would you agree that there is a moderate risk of failure?
And I wouldn't agree there's a moderate risk, but I would say that there is, there is a risk because of the house, the target. So we would consider the house, the people inside the house a target. They're not there twenty-four seven in that area. And also that tree is pretty close to the house. The closer a tree is to a house, there's less damage because it has less leverage to fall on. But I would say there is a risk. I still don't feel like it's a high risk. I mean, that tree has been there for a while. And I wasn't told of any previous failures that happened to the roof of the house or to the structure of the house.
Okay, let me ask, let me ask it this way. I'll give you three options. You tell me which one you agree with. In your opinion, is there a low risk of failure, a moderate risk of failure, or a high risk of failure?
So I can't answer that because I didn't do a tree risk assessment. It's not required for me to do that when I look at trees. And so I wouldn't be able to give you an answer. I can just say that there is a risk and also I do understand how close the tree is to the house, but typically I would have to see some type of damage. And also I just can't prove something because of development when there's other locations for development. So I was only looking at this from a tree perspective. And so just from what was, they applied for the TPC exception in the last, in a previous planning commission thing for the development. And that is still going forward. They're still proposing that location. So, and, and I can't approve something based on that if I can't meet the findings, which I couldn't. So, I mean, this is.
Yeah, this is the difference between the, the arborist input and the plant and the plant aspect of, I think it's on that, outside that cusp. All right, any other questions?
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
But, but, and Ralph, I sent you a picture that I took when I visited the site. We don't have to do it, pull it up right now, but would you pull it in so I can use it later if I need to?
Oh, yes.
All right, then I'll go ahead and open up the public comments section and we'll start with the applicant or their representative.
Francis Pham, Topos Architects.
All right.
I speak on behalf of Philip and Lindy Marco. Thank you, planning commissioners, town planning staff, and any concerned neighbors. We appreciate the time and effort you have put into reviewing our project. In response to your feedback and advice, we have put forth to you an alternative proposal. As you had mentioned from our previous hearing, tree number thirty-one is currently located in a position that is out of place relative to the home. In viewing this proposition from a practical standpoint, we believe that our project warrants the removal of the fault for the following reasons. One, the current location does not provide any visual, practical, or privacy benefits to the home nor site. Two, the removal of the trees do not have a negative impact on the community or any privacy concerns. Three, there will be no reduction of shade, noise buffers, historic value, health, safety, and general welfare in the area and town as a whole. Four, the tree itself is leaning heavily towards the home over existing bedrooms. Our project consists in part in modest two hundred and seventy-three square foot.
Sorry, Francis, we just had a request. If you could talk into the mic a little more. I'm having a hard time online.
Our project consists in part in modest two hundred and seventy-three square foot brown floor addition that includes a bathroom and extension of a bedroom to better suit our clients' needs. Please consider that if this were a completely new construction, the tree removal, the removal of one tree would likely be considered reasonable. In holding such a firm line on the renovation close to the existing trees, it would make it more difficult for citizens to maintain and improve their properties in a reasonable and practical manner. This in turn may incentivize property owners to completely rebuild at higher densities. Our clients have thirty-seven mature trees on their property, all of which have been carefully and lovingly maintained. Most of the trees provide shading, privacy, and help to maintain the neighborhood character. The tree in question, however, is already too close to the house and leaning in such a manner that it would one day cause damage to the structure. It does not provide any meaningful shade or privacy and is not visible from the neighboring properties. Per today's report, pending the approval of the commissioners, the town arborist would be in support of three replacement trees. The trees will provide further shade, privacy, and enhance the community character, all of which would be a net win for the town, neighbors, and our clients. We respectfully request that you grant our project the proposed tree removal authorization. Thank you.
All right, thank you. What size tree are you proposing to, to replace in the front location?
Three twenty-four gallon oak trees.
How mu- how much?
Three twenty-four gallon.
Three twenty-four gallon. Okay, thank you. All right, good. Any, any questions of the applicant?
Oh, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else to speak on this item? All right, good. Then I'll, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back for discussion and actions appropriate with commission. Yeah, I'm, I'm the one who suggested that, that this could be something I would consider as a, as a potential solution. Can you put up that picture of the, that I sent? One of the things, when I visited the site the first time and then I rechecked it this time, there's a, that tree is really close and it does lean over the house. It does provide some shade, obviously, from the, from the, from the window in front. But actually, if you slide over a little bit, yeah. The, there's another oak tree. Is that an oak tree next to it, Sally, on the left? That's like about eight feet to the left. It looked like another oak tree.
I think that is another oak tree.
Yes. All right, so it's, it's not getting much sun and it's, it's definitely, it's definitely being affected by this tree also. So my thinking on this was one, this is, if, if someone had proposed the house to be built on the footprint with that tree, I would have, if on the, I would have said, take the tree down when you build that house, or don't put the house, don't put the tree there in the first place. There, there are heritage trees and then there are heritage trees. And you know, heritage trees have different family threads and this one's not an overly great tree in the, in the beginning and it does lean. towards the house and it's going to grow more that way. So my, my thinking on this is that this is one, the combination of the, the location of this, the replacement of the tree farther forward on the property. So it actually would be more screening for the neighborhood viewing in. This one is one that I, I could, I could support regardless of, of any changes to the floor plan. I would just, if somebody came forward and said, hey, this is leaning towards my house, I would consider this one as, as acceptable. Any other comments?
Yes, this is Nancy. I would say that I was about to say everything Eric did, so I completely agree. This is an inappropriate tree at this place on this property.
So, so, so I'll dissent
Yep.
for now. Based purely on procedure, for the following reasons. So if the applicant comes back with a report that supports a conclusion that there is a moderate risk of failure, underline moderate, then I would support the application based on eight point one zero dot zero four zero D two, which addresses the probability of personal injury or property damage. Right now, the applicant's arborist hasn't, hasn't proven to me, hasn't submitted a report to me that supports the finding that there is a moderate risk, at least a moderate risk of failure. I think I heard Sally say that there's things such as, is it risk analysis, Sally? Tree risk failure analysis?
It's a tree risk assessment.
All right, I was close. So I would vote in favor of the applicant if a revised arborist report comes back with that kind of analysis, failure analysis to support a conclusion or finding that the tree, that there's a moderate risk of damage to property or.
Well, Perry, forgive it.
That's all, that's all I have to say.
All right, great. Gabby, anything on this one?
Said, sometimes it just takes one lightning storm where trees, because I came from sort of well wooded area in Great Falls, Virginia. These trees can be dangerous if they're too close to the property. So I would vote, I mean, I think that the modification would make sense, but I would vote to get to remove the tree.
All right.
Kind of where I'm standing on that.
All right, good. Then I'm ready to make a motion if, if no one else is.
Okay.
I'll make, I'm, I move with the planning commission, find the request for the heritage tree removal for one coast live oak tree number thirty one is not contrary to the purpose and the intent of the general plan based on the criteria provided in section eight point one zero dot zero four zero D of the asset, authority municipal code, including but not limited to the allowing the reasonable use of the property, the probability of a safety hazard and the lack of impact on the general welfare of the area. And the planning commission approved the heritage tree removal H R, H T R permit at two six eight Catalpa Drive. A second?
I second that.
Moved and seconded, roll call. Yes.
Commissioner Lerner?
No.
Commissioner Narnsec?
No.
Commissioner Conce?
Yes.
Okay. So Nancy, I'm surprised by that because I thought your, your comments were the other direction.
Well, I understand that I am supporting cutting the tree down. Did I misinterpret it?
You misinterpreted it. That would be a yes, that would be a yes on this item, the way I.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Withdraw your prior motion and reread the motion into the record and we'll take a new roll call.
All right, I'll take a new roll. You just like to me to read, don't you?
I'm happy to read it.
All right. I have moved the planning commission, find the request for the heritage tree removal of the, of one coast live oak tree, not contrary to the purpose and the intent of the general plan based on the criteria provided in the section of eight point one zero point zero four zero D of the authority municipal code, including but not limited to the following reasonable use of the property, the probability of safety hazard and the lack of impact to the general welfare of the area. And the planning commission approved the heritage tree removal H T R permit at two six eight Catalpa Drive. That's what, this would allow the removal of the tree. I have a roll call.
Chair Lane?
Take two. Yes.
Commissioner Lerner?
Yes.
Commissioner Narnsec?
I'll vote no twice.
Commissioner Conce?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, there you go. Thank you for taking the time. Good luck with your request to the, to the, to the board, but just make sure that tree looks good when it goes in front. All right. Thank you very much. All right, so now we have a, both an interesting and somewhat tearful staff report. Because we're, we're losing Stephanie and Ralph and we're going to have a little soiree next Thursday where we get to say a formally goodbye to them. But it's, it's really hard. I mean, I, you know, I was, I was this tall when I started meeting you guys. So a staff report.
Thank you, Charlene. Just for those who may be listening in, I think the information has been put out publicly about a month or so ago, but the firm that currently provides planning services to the town, Good City Company, which is a company that both myself and Ralph work for, will, as of next week, will no longer be providing planning services to the town and the planning department and all planning services will be taken over, excuse me, by a new firm. Firm's name is M Group. We do have a couple of their management staff here. Just take a brief moment to introduce themselves.
Yeah, why don't you come up to the podium so that we can see on the camera? Just, yeah, just so that everybody can welcome you all over the world.
Hello, everybody. Sung Kwan, I'll be taking over the position of contract city planner.
All right, very good.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Radha Haigri. I'm stepping in for the future, Stephanie, if I can hold that up. But I'm the senior urban planner from M Group coming in to help the town with planning services. Nice to meet all of you.
All right, thank you for coming. A little forward to your, to your work starting next week and I'm looking forward to the, to, to you plus Lisa, plus anyone else you pile on in the last weeks or so for the next week, next week's event as well as hopefully continuing to work on some of the things to do with our plan with the state.
Yes, thanks for bringing that up. So Good City Company will still be involved in assisting the town in the continued efforts for the housing element update. So you will likely see us again at some point in the future when the next procedural step that triggers planning commissioner public hearing takes on. Going back to the soiree of next week, Jake Garcia and Neil Martin will both be attending also. Bringing in the guns, yeah.
Very good, very good. All right, Ralph, and we'll miss you, Ralph, on your excellent work and your detail on, on everything from the minutes to the packages and the availability of them on time and the communication to get on it. And all the, all the detail work that you do to make sure that the meeting moves smoothly. So and Stephanie, you've been a pal and a, and a, and a coach and a, and a great, a great talent for this city for years. So wish.
Thank you. Likewise.
No, thank you, Charlene. And thank all of you. I unfortunately will not be here next Thursday. I'm having a baby on Monday, but.
You don't even show.
Thank you, thank you. My wife's had a baby.
But congratulations.
No, thank you.
Very cool, very cool. That'll be a full week. Yeah, all right. You know what? Just think of it this way. This is the last weekend you'll get any sleep for two years. All right, item number six, commissioners reports. Any, anything on that, anyone?
Not here.
Not here, not here either. Let's go back to Mount Aray, so I'm just getting back to the end of the city. All right, any, then the last item is always a difficult one. Item number seven, need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
They're going to die for lack of a second.
Second.
All right, there you go. Roll call, please.
Charlene.
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner?
Yes.
Commissioner Narnsec?
Yes.
Commissioner Conce?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, hopefully we'll see all of you on Thursday and thank you all for coming and welcome. And where's, don't let the fun begin. All right, thank you. Thank you all for attending. See you next time.
You, take care.